Good morning, Commissioners. This is Kristi, your host. We are live and recording.
Thanks, Kristi, for resetting the room for us. I appreciate that. So, welcome, everybody, to our Tuesday, May 13, 2025, public hearing. If you'll all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Attorney Garcia, do we have certification of the agenda today?
Yes, sir. The county attorney's office reviewed all items on this agenda. You have appropriate jurisdiction over these matters, and where necessary, appropriate posting has been made.
Thank you very much. And do any Commissioners have disclosures for items on this agenda today?
No.
No, sir.
And I don't either. With that, we're going to start with our first item, which is Item 2A, our land use meeting agenda item, which is a waiver of central services requirement in the commercial zone district zoning resolution waiver request, project file SB 2024-081. Eric Pavlenek from Planning presenting for staff. Hi, Eric.
Excuse me. Eric Pavlenek, representing Planning Services. The project before you is a request for a waiver from the zoning resolution, project file SP 2024-081. Brandon and Heidi Messer are the applicants, and Caroline Emmons Young Henry is the applicant representative. The request is a waiver to Section 106 of the zoning resolution, which requires that all uses in the commercial zone district shall be served by a central water and sanitation facility. The applicant has an administrative site approval plan, SIP application for a coffee shop currently in process. The applicant's representative asserts that central water services cannot be feasibly extended to the property and that the site can't be adequately served by an existing exempt well and onsite wastewater treatment facility. The product site is located in Franktown, specifically the Franktown Village area, as shown by the red star. The property is owned commercial, which includes a coffee shop. Here's an aerial view of the subject parcel in red. The property was initially developed as a residence. An SIP application to convert the property for commercial use was submitted in 2000 but was closed due to inactivity. The current property owners purchased the property in February of 2024 and are proposing to convert the 1,500-square-foot building into a coffee shop. The waiver process is set forth in Section 122 of the zoning resolution. Waivers may be requested by an applicant in conjunction with any applications subject to standards or other criteria established within the zoning resolution. For administrative land use applications such as an SIP, a waiver request is considered by the board at a regular public land use meeting. This slide depicts the proposal, which shows as-built conditions. The coffee shop facility is right here. The applicant estimates the water demand for the coffee shop of approximately 0.92 acres feet a year or 25 gallons per day. This demand can be served by the existing well, which is permitted to withdraw up to 1 acre feet annually from the Denver aquifer. The Colorado Division of Water Resources reviewed the applicant's water demands and proposed water supply and has no objection, as long as the terms and conditions of the well permit are complied with. There is an existing septic system on the property. The applicants may be required to obtain additional permits from the Douglas County Health Department based on the findings of the evaluation of an existing septic system by a certified septic designer. Pursuant to Section 122, the waiver must demonstrate compliance with the following standards. The approval standards are listed on this slide and discussed in detail in the staff report. In absence of water and sanitation district, the proposed use may be served by the existing exempt well and septic system. Should the board find that the waiver standards are met, the staff proposes the following conditions to be included in the board's motion. Condition number one: All other standards, requirements, and permits associated with the proposed SIP application shall be met prior to final approval. Condition number two: Any proposed changes to the site that increase water demand shall require a subsequent waiver from the central water and sanitation requirements. And condition number three: All commitments and promises made by the applicant or the applicant's representative during the public meeting and agreed to in writing and included in the public record have been relied upon the Board of County Commissioners in approving the applicant's application. Therefore, such approvals conditioned upon the applicant's full satisfaction of all such commitments and promises. Section 122 of the zoning resolution sets forth the parameters of the board's decision on waiver requests, noted on this slide. This concludes my presentation. As Caroline Emmons Young Henry is the applicant representative who submitted the waiver request. Mark Di Benedetti is also here, representing the property owners.
Great. Thank you so much, Eric. Any questions for staff from the Commissioners?
Yeah, I do. So, Eric, what do we... Okay, so we're being asked to provide a waiver for a freshwater supply so they can use the well. But, I mean, that's still within kind of the Franktown area. If you go further to the east, I mean, do you have other commercial operations that are still on wells and septic?
Yeah. Eric Pavlenek for staff. This slide shows the kind of Franktown area. The red is commercially zoned properties. There is no central water and sewer service. They're all on well and septic. The nearest provider is probably Castle Rock, which is a little bit more north and west. But, yeah, everything in Franktown is on well and septic. There is no district that provides that service.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Teal. Additional questions, Commissioner?
Yes, Mr. Chair. And really, no matter what we decide to do today or what ruling comes down today, there still are health codes and oversight of the Health Department, correct?
Eric Pavlenek for staff. Yes, that is correct. The Health Department is reviewing the application. They've submitted to them for review of the tenant finish. So, they're reviewing the plan review for the food service part of it and also the septic as well. So, that's concurrent with the site plan process.
And so, the water quality itself will be checked?
Yeah. The applicant, they do have a well permit from the Colorado Division of Water Resources. If approved, they get building permits. They'll have to put in the new well by a professional, and then they coordinate with the state. I believe there's a report that gets completed after the fact.
As a public water provider? Yes.
The water is just regulated by the state through the well permit. They have a well permit and they're allowed to operate in accordance with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. I don't have any additional questions, and if I do, I'll reserve those following the applicant's presentation. If the applicant would like to step forward, identify yourself and where you're from, you can proceed.
Awesome. So, my name is Caroline Young Henry. I'm with Shaner &amp; Franklin. And thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today regarding my client's water and sewer waiver request for Douglas County. We truly appreciate your time and the attention you have devoted to reviewing this matter. It's certainly been a collaborative process to get to this point, and I want to acknowledge the helpful guidance of Eric during this process. So, again, for the record, my name is Caroline Young Henry. I'm an attorney with Shaner &amp; Franklin, here on behalf of my clients, Brandon and Heidi Messer, regarding their waiver request for their property located at 206 Kelty Road. I'd like to provide a brief background on the property and the associated water rights that will probably give a little bit more context as to why we're asking for the waiver. The property has a longstanding mixed-use history, serving both residential and domestic use as well as small-scale commercial purposes. There are four primary structures on the property. There is the residential building, built in 1918, that has an attached 757-square-foot retail store that was also built in 1918. There's an outbuilding that was built in 1940, a 318-square-foot outbuilding built in 2006 that currently is used for equipment storage. And there is a 1,065-square-foot outbuilding that was also built in 1918 that was originally used for poultry operations. And so, the retail space has continuously served small businesses over the years. It was a co-op at one point, later a boutique, a store, and most recently, it was a coffee shop prior to my clients. The residential space and poultry shed further reflect the property's hybrid historical use. Although official business records for the site is limited, understandably given the era, local word of mouth and historical community knowledge supports the consistent commercial use of the property. The site includes a well permit number WCB-147, the original well, which was drilled in 1956 for domestic use. But notably, it lacked a defined annual acreage foot limitation. This well served both the residential and commercial activities on the property without any formal change to the use designation, as required by Douglas County and also the Division of Water Resources. Roughly about 20 years ago, there was an attempt to bring the well into compliance, but that was abandoned due to the complexity and the financial burden by the previous owners. As a result, successive owners continued to use the well based on its historical use without updating its legal designation. So, in order to address these longstanding issues associated with this property, Brandon and Heidi have been proactive in updating the well's use to reflect its actual and historical utilization. Their request for a change in use was approved under Permit Number 336476, which was issued in accordance to Policy 1985-1, which allows for water use that serves as a commercial business along with a directly associated residential unit. The Division of Water Resources has confirmed that the well's current permitted use satisfies their concerns outlined in their October 10, 2024 correspondence with the Water Resources Engineer. It is also worth noting that the applicants are also owners of a decreed underground water right in addition to the well permit under Case Number 2020CW3028, which applies to the 1-acre parcel. This further supports their ability to sustainably manage water use on the property. In summary, Brandon and Heidi are committed to resolving legacy issues related to water and sewer compliance on this historically mixed-use property. Their request today reflects both a continuation of longstanding practices and a responsible step towards formalizing compliance with county and state requirements. At this time, the Community Resources Services of Colorado manages the Franktown Business Area Metropolitan District. However, the district does not currently provide water or services within its boundaries. The closest current supporting town is the town of Castle Rock, approximately 2 miles away. And so, it's really not feasible to put that expenditure to tap in to that centralized water and sewer district for a small coffee shop. The Messers fully recognize and support long-term objectives lined in the Comprehensive Master Plan, which is to eventually extend centralized water and sewer infrastructure to the area. In the meantime, they respectfully request approval of this waiver as a necessary and reasonable step, consistent with the property's historic use and in alignment with current limitations on available infrastructure. Thank you again for your time. Any questions?
Thank you very much for that presentation. Any questions of the applicant? Okay. Not seeing any questions from our board. Are you okay with the conditions as presented?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And then, let me turn to staff. So, how did this go? And first and foremost, if we can get the referral comments at the top of the packet. Were there referrals? Did this go out on referral?
It did. The site approval plan. And I think for the waiver, were there any comments? I think we handed something out just now on this and were there referrals in that?
Yeah. The packet included the referral letters from the Health Department and the Colorado Division of Water Resources.
Okay. And what you just handed out. Okay. Okay. And then, how did it go with the Planning Commission? Did the Planning Commission see this?
They don't see this.
This is not something they would see? Okay. Okay. I'll just ask the board if the board has had an opportunity to review the packet that staff brought today.
And those materials were in the staff report. We just kind of reprinted them so that you could easily reference them in the meeting.
So, this isn't new stuff?
This is not new.
Oh, okay. Okay. What page are the referral comments on? I found it. It's 67. I would just say again, it's always really helpful for us as the quasi-judicial fact-finder to make sure that we have referral comments near the top, and then, if there is any action by the Planning Commission, to have that clearly referenced. But appreciate the reference to the comp plan. That's always really helpful as well. And I know we all have the comp plan at our diocese here, which is great. Any additional comment or questions from the board?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Was there a slide on the conditions presented? I was looking for it.
Yes.
Three conditions. These are the first two, and then the third condition.
Okay. Could you go to the... Okay. Looks good. Thank you.
Sure.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner. Any other Commissioner questions?
No. If we could just go to the approval standards while we deliberate?
Okay. And maybe while we are doing that, I'll open it up for any citizen comment with regard to this item. Is there any citizen comment in the room or online with regard to this item?
Thank you, Commissioner Layden. There is no online comment.
Thank you so much, Kristi. With that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for further discussion, deliberation, and/or emotion.
Well, I'm going to oppose this waiver. I mean, the bottom line is, guys, I guess Mr. Messer hasn't communicated with you, but he's communicated with me. He is not a good corporate citizen of Douglas County, and we need to refuse this waiver. The reality is, his ownership of this property has been defined by one violation after another, only to be caught by our own staff, holding basic standards. And then, he resorts to intimidation, what I think others might interpret as intimidation, to me, and implying that, you know, horrible things are going to happen if he doesn't get this approved real quick behind closed doors and taken care of. So, I'm opposing it. And by the way, I have very grave questions about whether that this would be... that this would actually be non-detrimental to under Condition 122.03.2, because it would constitute a health concern. I mean, the reality is, this property has not been used as a food establishment in the past. It was absolutely always been used as dry goods. I appreciate the applicant's counsel pointing out the use of it as a chicken coop and egg production. I guess maybe we all need to revisit the differences between food production as an agricultural use versus actual food serving and the serving of prepared food. All in all, I'm going to oppose this one. I think Mr. Messer is not the kind of businessman we need operating in Douglas County. And quite frankly, his conduct on every other version of opening a business in Douglas County has been one of disregard. Doesn't that give us pause in whether or not we can approve under 122.03.2 when there could be a health effect? There could be a public health concern generated? So, I'm opposing.
Commissioner, thank you. And I'm going to pause for a moment because you've raised some really significant and egregious issues associated with our standard land use protocol. So, I'm going to defer to our county attorney on this. The first thing I heard was that there may have been an inappropriate ex parte communication between the applicant and a commissioner, and that that might involve some level of harassment and intimidation, which is actually criminal, based upon my reading of Title 18. Counselor?
Yeah. That would be a different standard than we'd be looking at in this matter. It is at the discretion of the board to apply these criteria, and citing at least one criteria would be sufficient.
Well, I understand the legal approval standards for this particular land use application, but I'm more concerned about the ex parte communications prior to this hearing.
That in and of itself would not deny this.
Okay.
That's a different issue.
Okay. Is there anything that we need to do legally on the record to preserve our ability to adjudicate this?
I don't believe so. I think the disclosure that's been made by Commissioner Teal is helpful. If there is any additional detail he'd like to provide, he's more than welcome to do so.
Okay. Any additional detail?
Yeah. The reality is, Mr. Messer has no patience for the process. And it's... They're all still on my phone, quite frankly. I could pull them up if you fellows want to see them. The reality is, you know, the guy responds with anger and impatience when... to a simple, "Hey, let's take a look at this." Okay. Are we... Now, listen. We know that we have existing businesses that do run afoul of our regulations, and we do our very best to try to accommodate them. But, you know, do we need to open it? We've got the opportunity to say yes or no here to an applicant, and quite frankly, for a waiver from our normal standards. I say we deny it because he's just shown over and over again, he has no patience for the process, and his only answer is to probably never dial me up again, probably never actually text me again, but one of you, or the abuse that I'm sure he's visiting upon our own staff. So, I mean, is this really the kind of conduct that we expect of ourselves and our businesses here in Douglas County? And all the while, guys, we're being asked for a waiver. We can... I have a concern about this establishment moving forward as a public health concern. We can just say no.
And I appreciate that. My concern out of the gate is any sort of harassing or threatening or intimidating language directed towards an adjudicating body in an ex parte fashion before it's before the board could rise to a criminal issue. And so, I want to make sure and make that clear for the record. For today's purposes, if the county attorney is advising us that we may still proceed on this matter, I want to make sure that I'm tying whatever decision we make to our legal approval standards and walk through those line by line. I think Commissioner Teal has made a strong argument for denial based upon 122.03.2. If there's not anything additional from Commissioner Teal, Commissioner Van Winkle, any comments?
No. I think, given what's come to light today... Well, my initial read of the packet itself was that it would actually be pretty cool to have a coffee shop on that corner. But given the public safety concerns that I fully haven't vetted, and frankly, as a new commissioner, questions over the legality and ex parte communications that I might have, I'm not sure I'd be comfortable issuing a ruling today.
If I may?
Please.
So, I think there's a couple of things. The information given today by Commissioner Teal does raise the need to for a further evaluation of the application as well as maybe some additional investigation of the process. You are not barred by any reason for making a determination on this, though you may want to stay the decision until such time that the county feels more comfortable with this application.
Well, I would support that advice of counsel and would entertain a motion to stay, pending additional investigation and evaluation.
You know, that'll probably be... That'll probably be fine. I mean, it's... And by the way, the communications may not have been ex parte in a quasi-judicial application because, quite frankly, Mr. Messer had already paved over the lot in question. It used to not be paved. But in anticipation of his opening and anticipation of his threats and intimidation being taken action upon, yeah, he took action to actually pave over. So, he actually already has, and maybe it's been adjudicated by our own staff, an issue with handling... Oh, shoot. I apologize. I'm spacing the word. It's not wastewater, but it is, you know, drainage from the property because he took an acre of pervious land and kept it with under asphalt without actually going through our process in order to have that reviewed. And so, part of these communications, I don't know if they were ex parte at the time. I do not know if he had this request for a waiver in at the time. He was communicating with me at a time when our planning staff, our building code staff, was already raising the red flag that he had already paved over without any kind of... Again, I'm so sorry. I'm spacing the category of water flow from the property into the drainage. And by the way, if we pull up the map again, I think we're going to see this is pretty close to Cherry Creek, where, guys, you know, I mean, Abe, you and I have both been on the Cherry Creek Water Quality Authority, and we know the issues that affect water quality in Cherry Creek and the Cherry Creek reservoir. However, if the board believes that a stay is the most appropriate action, I'd be happy to make a motion to that effect.
Well, my understanding of a stay is that we are absolutely not approving this application today. I do appreciate that additional input. My focus is more on the communications made by the applicant that may rise to a need to further investigate. Commissioner Van Winkle?
I would approve... Or I would appreciate a stay today in a ruling as new questions have come to light for me, balancing that with what, again, when I first saw it, seemed like an okay thing. But I think I have additional questions that I've not had the opportunity to ask yet.
Is that a motion?
Oh, Mr. Chair. I move to stay... Hold on. I move to stay this waiver request.
I'll second.
So, we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And this action will be stayed pending further investigation. Moving on to our next item for today, which is in our public hearing agenda items. It's Item 3A 9315, Sand Creek Road rezoning, project file ZR 2024-030. Trevor Bedford, senior planner, presenting for staff. Hi, Trevor.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Trevor Bedford, representing Planning Services. Before you is a request to rezone property known as 9315 Sand Creek Road from Agricultural One to large rural residential. The project number is ZR 2024-030. The request is to rezone approximately 30.16 acres from Agricultural One to large rural residential. The intent of the rezoning process is to provide a process to amend the official zone district map with regard to the area of any zoning district in accordance with Section 2467 101 of the Colorado Revise Statutes. The rezoning process begins with the submission of an application. Following a review period by referral agencies in the public, notice is given for public hearings before the Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners. No public comment has been received from abutting property owners. The Planning Commission heard the rezoning request at its April 21 hearing and voted unanimously 6 to 0 to recommend approval to the board. This project is located in the northeast portion of the county, in the Parker area. This is within the northeast subarea as identified by the Comprehensive Master Plan land use map. This map shows the zoning in the area. This map shows the zoning in the area. The property abuts Agricultural One properties to the east, north, and west. The parcels to the north and west are residential and agricultural uses, with parcel sizes ranging from 10 to 20 acres. Directly to the east is a utility tract. The property abuts estate residential properties to the south with lot sizes of approximately three acres adjacent to the site. This aerial depicts the project site outlined in red. The site is currently zoned Agricultural One, which is typically appropriate for properties larger than 35 acres. The owner wishes to subdivide the property to create one additional lot. Large rural residential is intended for densities between one dwelling per 10 acres and one dwelling per 35 acres. This zoning would be consistent with the owner's future plans as well as the existing 30.16-acre property. Should the rezoning be approved, the owner will go through the subdivision process to create the additional lot. This is the proposed rezoning exhibit. There is an existing house and barn in the southwest corner of the property. The remainder of the property is vacant and used for grazing. This is a view of the site from Sand Creek Road facing northeast. And this is a view from Sand Creek Road facing northwest. The approval standards for a rezoning request are set forth in Section 25 and listed on this slide. Staff's assessment of the approval standards is discussed in detail on pages four through six of the staff report. The rezoning process is described in zoning resolution, Section 2504. The board shall evaluate the rezoning request, staff report, referral agency comments, applicant responses, the Planning Commission recommendation, and public comment and testimony, and shall approve, approve with conditions, continue, table for further study, remand to the Planning Commission, or deny the rezoning request. This concludes staff's presentation. I'm available to take questions on the staff report at this time if the board wishes. Otherwise, the owner, William Driscoll, is here to speak.
Trevor, thank you for that presentation. Any questions for staff?
No questions now.
Okay, thank you very much, Commissioners. If the applicant's present, if you want to share anything with us, you're not compelled to make a presentation, but you certainly can if you'd like.
Well, thank you very much. I'm William Driscoll, and the owner of this property. Thanks for your time, and thanks for recommending the approval last meeting. Could you bring up the map of the... That one, okay. So it's really a simple request, in my opinion. It's 30 acres of ag land. I'm asking to have it rezoned to a large parcel rural residential. And for the purpose of dividing it into two lots, a 10-acre lot which houses, yeah, the house and the shop and the shed, which is on the left side of the area that's enclosed in red. And then the 20 acres would be on the right side. And it lines up with all the other properties, the adjacent owners. Those properties are either 10 or 20-acre lots, which is exactly what this will be. And then on the south side, those adjoining properties are, well, they're like three-acre lots. So that's it, and I'm, you know, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Sir, thank you very much for being here before us and sharing that with us. Any questions of the applicant?
I guess my question for the applicant would be, so your intent is you're going to remain on the property that has the current residence on it, and then, but the intent is to sell, and the 20 acres will be its own independent residence for the future buyer?
Yeah, thanks for asking that. Actually, for personal reasons, my wife and I have decided to downsize. So we built that house and all the property, and so after it's divided, we're going to sell the 10 acres with the house and everything, and we're just going to keep the 20 acres for ourselves as an investment. So it'll be totally vacant, unimproved. It'll just be vacant land.
Okay.
With an entrance.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any additional questions? Okay, I don't have any additional questions either. So with that, I'll open it up for any citizen comment, either in person or online with regard to this item. Any citizen comment?
Thank you, Commissioner Layden. There is no online comment.
Okay, thank you. And with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
Chair, you know, I've said many times from the diocese here that I absolutely believe in the principle that our property owners should have an opportunity to capitalize on their property during the time of their ownership. It was, I really appreciate the applicant answering the question he waited, he did, that basically just outlines, I mean, this is an opportunity to make use of his property to provide capital for his wife and himself, and probably children, we didn't go into that, but probably heirs. It's these kind of land use decisions that historically I've always supported. I do think that this is appropriate land use. You know, we get, we hear a lot from Sterling Ranch, per se. We hear a lot from larger developments. Anytime we hear from a resident and property owner that wishes to use their land to provide for their own capital, I think it's well within Douglas County traditions for us to go along with the request. I do not believe, I could not understand how this would be in any way a violation of any of our standards, and that each one of our standards are being adhered to in this request. So I speak in favor, and if it pleased the board, I do have a motion to approve 9315 Sand Creek Road rezoning. Project file is ZR 2024-030.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do we have a second?
I will second that motion.
We have a second from Commissioner Van Winkle. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries. So that's all we have before us today. The next land use meeting will be held on Tuesday, May 27, 2025, at 2:30 p.m. We are adjourned.